Does TV work?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Um, this is the regular meeting for the City Council for Monday, November fourteenth, twenty sixteen. Uh, I'm calling to order. May I have Pauline Fong Martinez come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Right up to the middle, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic, to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, well, now it makes sense.
I know, right?
It didn't then.
Okay, so, uh, with that, let's have a roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Canapa. Mr. Gengona. Mr. Buenaventura.
Present.
Mr. Torres.
Present. Uh, Mr. Canapa is out of town, and Mr. Gengona is home recovering from illness, so we wish, uh, one to get a speedy recovery and the other one, uh, a good rest and his vacation. Before we get started, I want to make, uh, a note of introducing a couple of people who are with us tonight. Uh, let me start with our newly elected council members. Mr. Glenn Sylvester and his lovely wife. Hi Glenn, welcome. Thank you for not wearing the Hawaiian shirt tonight.
I like the Hawaiian shirt.
We're gonna rib you until whenever. And also council member-elect Jocelyn Manalo. I also want to acknowledge one of our former candidates for City Council, Gabriela Maxman, who's here with us tonight, Gabriela. And, uh, we have Commissioner Dori Paniza. Hi, Dori. We have, uh, our Jefferson Elementary School District Board Member, Marie Brazwell. Hi, Marie. I missed any other... Oh, and our newly re-elected treasurer, uh, Danica Halverson. Danica, welcome. Hard, hard, tough campaign, Danica. Running against yourself, that must've been really tough. Um, I think I got everyone there.
Oh, there's Norm Rizzi.
Who'd I miss? Oh, where's... Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I missed Norm Rizzi. Can you stand up, Norm?
Yes.
I'm looking right past you, sorry. One of our commissioners and who else did I miss? Oh, Nancy, hi. The bag was blocking me, sorry. Welcome, so, thank you. What was that?
You forgot me. I was re-elected.
I was... Oh, that's right, you did get it. Another hard-fought campaign, another unopposed reelection, thank you. Probably a very tough campaign, running against yourself. Okay, uh, with that, um, let's go, uh, on to our presentations. Tonight, we have a presentation from, uh, regarding our Arts and Culture Commission events called Light Up Our World. It's taking place, um, here at City Hall on Saturday, November nineteenth, twenty sixteen. And this presentation will be done by the Chair of the Arts and Culture Commission, Pauline Fong Martinez. Pauline?
Anne Arpaio.
Okay, Anne, bring them all up. Call them out by name.
Okay. Um, so, good evening. Honorable Mayor Torres, our esteemed members of City Council, um, Mr. Buenaventura, Ms. Christensen, and, um, our City Manager, Ms. Pat Martell, our fellow Commissioners who are here, and our newly elected City Council Members, um, Jocelyn and Glenn. Thank you for your time. Um, first, I want to acknowledge the support and work of our Commissioners, um, Manufo, Dori, Nancy, and Norm. We also have an incredible team of more than two dozen volunteers who are helping to put this event together. And, um, they are seated right here. We've got Sue Bulley, Matthew Martinez, yes, he's my son. Gabriela, we all know, and Alice, who is Matthew's friend, and, and of course, we know of our Commissioner. And am I missing anyone? Oh, and Alex. Um, Haveria was there. And I think I got everyone. And of course, Norm came in, okay. And, um, we also have a legion of over seventy-five visual artists, poets, singers, and musicians who are also part of the event. So, and from our inception, twenty months, twenty-one, about twenty-one months ago, we are very, very grateful for our Assistant City Manager, Julie Underwood's guidance, okay, and encouragement. Thank you, Julie. So, tonight, uh, we're gonna give you an update on Light Up Our World. And it will be taking place this Saturday, November nineteenth, at five PM, rain or shine. Okay, we won't put you out in heavy rain, though, if it does rain. We do have backup plans. And, but this will also be preceded by the memorial for Danny Kalanduyan at four thirty PM. And, Dori, you wanna come up and...
Thank you, Dori. Good evening, everyone. Couple of months ago, we contacted Danny Kalanduyan, who agreed to receive a lifetime achievement award for his lifelong work to further appreciation and practice of the Kolintang and Filipino cultural heritage. With much sadness, we learned of Danny's death, but we still want to honor him. Working with Conrad Benedicto, Mindano Lilang Lilang, and the Palabuniyan Kolintang Ensemble, we are hosting a memorial to honor Danny at four thirty PM, preceding Light Up Our World. This is an image of the invitation that was sent out to each of you personally. And also run off to the Phil Am Star last week. We're thankful for the Councilman Gengona's effort to involve our Filipino media to spread the word. During the remarks of Council Members Buenaventura and Gengona, we'll be making remarks after the remarks of Palabuniyan Kolintang, the music ensemble, under the artistic direction of Master Danungan Danny Kalanduyan. We'll play traditional music of the Southern Philippines. Their music will help kick off of our event at five PM. Please join us to honor a hero of arts and culture. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening again.
Thank you, Dori.
Good evening, I'm Susan.
Hi, Susan.
You may have seen that we finished installing the poetry from Duloo Clubhouse and the artworks of Holy Angels School. The boys and girls at Duloo's poetry were composed as answers to what light shines in your life. Their answers were references to a family, a kiss from mom, ice cream to cool off, a red bunny, and soccer. For the students at Holy Angels, their use of mixed mediums in the paper mache masks produced quite exceptional artworks. They perceive that the light that is in their world represents their culture and the men and women who symbolize the beauty and importance of their culture. Recognition ceremonies, in which we are asking each of you to participate in for both student groups, will be held in this chamber, beginning at seven PM, right after the candle lighting ceremony.
Good evening. Uh, during the event, we will have the high energy of San Francisco State University's Afro-Cuban Music Ensemble, who will be playing in the lawn area from five PM till seven PM.
In the what area?
In the lawn area.
The lawn area.
Lawn.
Yeah.
Must have a long summer around here. Oh, okay. That's what we're calling it now, the lawn, okay. Go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
We usually refer to that as the plaza area or something, you know, where the tables are. Right, yeah. Okay, we just make sure we guide people the right... We'll hear it.
We'll follow the music, go ahead.
And the World Temple of Vivos and Fani, who will be playing from seven to nine PM in Rose Garden. The young female artist, uh, Ariana, Ariana Bunak, second from the right over there, is from Vivos Music School. She will be performing a solo during the candle lighting ceremony. About forty extremely talented students from Mission Fusion, a dance group from Jefferson High School, will take their irrepressible energy to perform dance to Bollywood, hip-hop, Brazilian, and Cuban music for an intense twenty-five minute period, uh, starting at five thirty PM. They will dance from the octagon gallery down to the second floor and along to the lawn area outside where the candle lighting ceremony will be held. We challenge every one of you to keep still and not dance along with them while they perform.
Snap Fiesta's photo booth is our way to ensure that everyone can bring home a memento from, of their fun evening. For anyone who is not familiar with it, people will choose different props and just pose, mug, vamp their way through the four or five photos. Each member of the party can take home their own photo strip. This activity is also free for everyone.
Achen Zhao is an internationally recognized scholar and accomplished artist in Chinese calligraphy and brush painting, as well as Western oil painting. Achen teaches and practices in the Bay Area, and her works have been exhibited all over the world. Both CNN and PBS have produced documentaries of her work. Achen will be demonstrating her calligraphy and helping everyone develop their own calligraphy technique in their luminary lantern making during the event. Another Bay Area talent is Ning Ning Muir, who successfully create art using many mediums. For our event, we choose to exhibit her printmaking. A few of her prints will be on display, and we will develop simple printmaking activities to demonstrate how printing is not only an art form, but a way in how we live and think today. Printmaking has actually formed the basis of the way humans have developed art and literature. Ning Ning and her volunteers will help everyone use stamps, paints, and markers to create their own distinctive designs on the luminary bags.
Thank you. Firefighter playing with fire, how about that?
Uh, we're going to have a firelight performance by Ronnie Gu. Uh, our firefighter Ronnie Gu will be performing a spectacular theatrical performance using steel wool to create huge spinning sparks. The video of his first test run has been posted on the Art and Culture Commission's Facebook site. It has reached, uh, and been viewed by over one thousand two hundred Facebook subscribers already.
As you can see, um, we have, in a very small, relatively small amount of time, we have generated a lot of buzz. Uh, we've worked very hard, uh, making friends with the media. Um, as you can see, um, we've, uh, handed out posters, we've been on Phil Am Star, the Examiner, SF Weekly. Uh, my daughter has shared, um, to her school at, um, using Instagram, um, or on Facebook. And, yeah, and we encourage everybody, uh, who knows about this event to keep on sharing.
I wanted to go ahead and say that, in particular, you know, Alex has been instrumental.
If you don't, if you don't speak into the microphone, the television audience doesn't hear.
Thank you. I wanted to go ahead and especially recognize Alex, and even though he's not even... He used to live in Daly City, but moved to South City. We're trying to get him back. But Alex in particular has been very instrumental, getting us, you know, more than eight thousand dollars worth of free ads from San Francisco Examiner and SF Weekly. And he initiated, you know, the relationship with Phil Am Star, and, and we hope that we can bring Telemundo in, you know. And, um, and, you know, we, as a commission, are very cognizant of who lives in our city. Uh, we wish that we could provide many, many more translations, but we at least did it in English and Spanish and Chinese.
Good evening. So, uh, it's gonna be a lot of fun on, on Saturday, and hopefully you guys can put, um, photos, posts, and tweets, and share them. And then don't forget to use hashtag LoveDalyCityArts and hashtag LightUpOurWorld, so, to get, um, publicity out for, um, Arts and Commission. And we'd also like to thank, well, a lot of people, um, for their donations and their support. So, um, part of it started with the four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollar grant that was awarded by the San Mateo County Arts Commission. It's the first grant ever awarded to a government arts commission, so that's really exciting. Uh, there's been other donations that we received. It's the San Francisco Examiner, SF Weekly, Phil Am Star, Republic Services, Alex Adaria, MB Financial Insurance Services, City Escape Property Management, um, Daly City Host Lines, Energy Upgrade, and I'm sure you can read them, but, um, that was my task today. So, um, Californian Con, um, Connection to Community, Green Development, Sustainable Technologies Alliance, GDSTA, LLC, Malloy's Tavern, Peninsula Reflections, and Ana Mostea. And I think there's probably many more, but these are the main ones, and thank you for listening.
It's very interesting in terms of the publicity, you know, and our donations, 'cause they're really not just from Daly City, you know, but from San Francisco, from Koma, our volunteers are... I think the, the one who lives furthest away is from Pino, you know, so we're really trying to really create, you know, an event with Bay Area, you know, attendance. So, on this, um, on this Saturday, November nineteenth, beginning at five PM, I'm very well aware there's cameras, so I have to keep repeating it. We hope to bring many people together from the Bay Area to celebrate and support arts and culture in Daly City. So whether or not you believe that you are an artist, we will all be one as we participate in a community art performance. Together, we will form the shape of a heart to symbolize our love for art and our community. Despite the night, our candles will be powerful and will bring light into darkness. It will be a magical moment when we stand together for artistic expression, for arts education, for art appreciation and enjoyment. It is one of the greatest freedoms we have in this country. And each one of you here and here will have help to make this happen. So, thank you for your light on our world.
Bravo.
I wanted to thank you for your time tonight, and let's go have some fun on Saturday, okay?
I have a question. I have a question for you.
Yes.
First of all, Bravo, excellent job presenting, excellent job organizing it. It's really nice to see the Arts and Culture Commission not only have been formed within the last, within the last twelve months, right, I think? Yeah. Uh, to come up with something so magnificent and so comprehensive. Um, with respect to all the different performances and events you were talking about, are they all gonna be in succession or simultaneous?
They, the music, of course, um, will be in succession, okay, so there won't be any overlaps. And that's because even from day one, we wanted to have a rainy day plan. And because of the size and layout of our building, you really can't have two computing musical groups. But in terms of the art activities, they are definitely simultaneous, 'cause again, to, you know, if we get our thousand, you know, people, we wanna make sure that we have enough supplies and ongoing activities that will make everyone happy.
And you didn't mention anything about the storytelling?
I did not, and we just put some highlights, but I have to go ahead and, very sorry, but Mayor Sal is going to have a storytime.
That's not why I mentioned it earlier.
It's called Light Up Our Night. It's gonna be so fabulous. You'll be able to see the book projected on the screen. And, um, I have to tell you, we kind of like thought about having, you know, an MC. Yes, but then, you know, I was like, one day at an event, and of course, our mayor came in. I immediately even thought I was very sleep deprived that day, woke up and I thought, why would I be looking for anyone else, right? But, you know, but in fact, you know, every one of you, you know, have such an important part in this event, and I realize...
Way too much text in this.
Um, I also believe in staying on time, because we have so many different activities, and we have recognitions, you know. And, um, I promise that by Wednesday or Thursday, you'll have, you know, I tend to worry of, you know, where you can be for the photo shoots and for, you know, greeting people.
Can you mention these bags here, 'cause I think your group brought them as well, yeah?
I'm sorry?
The lumieres.
Oh, yes. Um, you know, it's, this is a high-security building, so we didn't wanna put it too close to you without any explanation. But these are actually for you. So, I'm gonna let you take whichever ones you have, and I think we have enough. I definitely want, you know, Jocelyn and Glenn to have it, and Pat, you know, and, um, our city attorney and our city clerk, you know, Annette and Rose, so there should be enough for everyone.
I'll take Cannapa since he's not here.
I didn't make one for him, actually, 'cause I knew he was gonna be gone. I knew Mike was gone. But if you come that night, you can make your own.
He wanted to actually get out of here, doesn't get one, okay. That's good.
I have a question. Do you, do you have, uh, did your funding include allocation for it to have like a professional photographer and a, and a video guy take everything so that you, we can preserve all this?
This is actually has been one of our greatest area of concern, and we do have a professional photographer. And we actually have two, one who's donating his time, and, um, and one who is a professional. And, and actually, Alex, if you notice, is one of our donors, and he actually is paying for that photography.
Oh.
Because we are not going through all this for ten minutes, you know, we want it to be on our website. Um, and I should say, it's dailycity, you know, dot org. It's a new website. It has all the information and all the press releases in English, Spanish, and Chinese, and the flyers are at the bottom, including a draft program.
Okay. And then I was wondering, I'm very impressed about your ability to get funding, uh, for this and the grant. Did, how did you go about doing that? Did you have a grant writer, or did you, how did you all get in the process of getting that done?
Um, I stayed home from two days of work and wrote out the grant.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then we wrote a lot of letters to a lot of different people and, you know.
Wow. Are there, are there other opportunities that you could see in advance to get more funding for more of your activities?
We, um, we do. In fact, we, um, we have an, a couple of other events, you know, that we want to go ahead and have. And we did not approach certain people, because actually, we want to go ahead and approach, um, these people. So we hope that they will come to the event and have a good time. And, um, we are a very new commission, so, you know, a lot of this is even building awareness, you know, and credibility, you know, that we are a functioning commission, and what do we do, you know, we get that question all the time. But we feel that this is a great event, um, in terms of our coming out, but also, you know, to showcase, you know, this great community and the great leadership we have in it.
Thank you, very well. Uh, we're looking forward to it. I think it's gonna be a great event, and I just can't wait, so, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, you know, if you wanna get someone from the Spanish television state... Where'd you go, Pauline?
Yes.
I keep losing people with those bags. There's a guy named Luis Megid on Univision, at Univision. He's probably retired newscaster, but I still think he does community events. The last name's spelled M-E-G-I-D. M-E-G-I-D. Can you contact him and tell him I told you to call him, and he might be able to help you out, at least connect you with somebody at Univision.
Okay, somebody wrote that down, right? Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, well, awesome job. Congratulations, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight and for sharing the news with everyone. Okay, we're on to the business of the City Council. Uh, next on the agenda, next on the menu, is approval of the regular meeting October twenty-four, twenty sixteen minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? None, those minutes are approved. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? The agenda's approved. Under the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve all fourteen items?
So move.
Second.
All right, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All fourteen items are hereby approved. We're on to public hearings.
Now we get down to business.
Item number fifteen, the always effervescent building code adoption. Is that, Ms. Mothershead, is that you, or Mr. Medipat will be up here? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Don't forget your coat.
I think she's probably coming back.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Members of City Council. The State of California recently published the two thousand sixteen California Code of Regulation Title Twenty-four, and will become effective January first of two thousand seventeen. And these are the California Building, Residential, Electrical, Mechanical, Plumbing, Energy, and Existing Building Code, and Green Building Standards. Including with this adoption is the International Property Maintenance Code. The California model codes are based on the two thousand fifteen edition of the international codes and the two thousand fourteen edition of the National Electrical Code. By adopting the two thousand sixteen California Code of Regulations Title Twenty-four, Daly City will be enforcing codes that are consistent with state regulations. The new code reflects changes in technology, fire safety techniques, including building industries, environmental, and sustainability requirements. California Health and Safety Code provide local jurisdiction the opportunity to modify the state model standard codes based on local climatic, geographical, and topographical conditions. Title fifteen of the Daly City Municipal Code, the most recent edition of the California Regulation Title Ten Four, represents Daly City's specific needs based on local conditions. Staff has evaluated specific Daly City amendments to these codes and assure that these amendments are up to date, useful, and enforceable. Minor editorial changes have been made primarily to the sections of the municipal code to reflect correct code sections, as some regulations in the model codes have been added, moved, or deleted. Most of the current municipal code amendments are being retained, which has served city well, such as requiring fire-resistant retrofits by installing additional fire-resistant gypsum board at all existing garage walls and ceilings, or carport walls, whenever a new habitable space is added. The requirements of automatic fire sprinkler system under the Building Code, Residential Code, and Plumbing Code are being deleted and are substituted by Daly City Municipal Code fifteen thirty-two, which is the fire code, as fire prevention personnel have the proper training, experience, and enforcement of automatic fire sprinkler system. Retaining the minimum plumbing standards where plastic pipes are not unapproved plumbing materials and cannot be installed within the building shell. Electrical wiring material shall be copper wire, and all other materials shall be approved by the administrative authority. Current building residential code requires that bedroom windows shall open to public way or yard, or a court that opens to a public way. Since a number of the housing stock in Daly City do not have side yards that provide an access from the rear yard leading to the public way, which includes some developments or new developments, Daly City Municipal Code amends California Residential Code by providing an exception to the emergency escape and rescue. To explain the amendment, the graphic shows a typical building layout without a side yard and has no access to a public way from the rear yard. Daly City Amendment will allow bedroom windows from one and two family dwelling, including townhouses, for the purposes of emergency escape, to open and discharge into the backyard without direct access to the public way, provided a minimum twenty-foot rear yard setback is provided, which is measured from the rear property line to the face of the foundation wall where the bedroom window is located, and the rear yard shall extend to the full width of the parcel. This amendment will address the intent and purpose of emergency escape and rescue, as it provides an acceptable safe area, the rear yard, in case of fire or earthquake. This applies to new building, including conversions, alteration, or addition to existing residential building. For new multifamily dwelling units or conversion, Daly City Municipal Code will allow bedroom windows to open to the rear yard or a court, provided the rear setback is ten feet, measured from the property line to the foundation wall, and the required rear yard setback shall extend to the full width of the parcel. In addition, the building will be required to provide an exit passageway that will direct, that will provide a direct path of travel to the public way from the rear yard without re-entering the building. Other municipal code regulation that have been amended for clarification are as follows. Detach one-story accessory structure. The Residential Code exempts detached single-family, single-story accessory structure used for tools... used for tools, storage shed, playhouses, and similar uses, provided floor area does not exceed one hundred twenty square feet. Daly City is amending the detached one-story accessory structure which exempts from permit and inspection. Our current code does not provide a clear direction on how or how many one-story detached accessory structures which is exempted from permits are allowed per parcel. The municipal code amendment will allow one or more single-story detached accessory structure per parcel, provided the sum of the total floor area of the single-story structure detached from the structure does not exceed one hundred twenty square feet and shall be located five feet away from the existing building. Trailers. Municipal Code Fifteen Zero Eight Point Two Sixty is added to regulate the use of modular units and mobile homes used for temporary purposes such as construction or sales office or during the holidays for shelter used by vendors. The municipal code provides limitation on the duration of time when these units are placed in parcels other than mobile home parts, which cannot exceed more than one hundred eighty days.
More than how many days?
One hundred eighty.
Thank you.
Location of rapid shutdown for photovoltaic system. Rapid shutdown for photovoltaic system is known to contractors as the fireman switch. The municipal code requires that this switch shall be located on the exterior of the building in a readily accessible location that in case of first responders have to turn off all electrical power source to the building, this switch will alert and assure first responders for their safety that the solar system is turned off and not generating electricity in addition to the P G N E power line without entering the building. Location of cleanout, these are access to remove blockage to the sewer system. Due to water conserving, conserving plumbing fixtures, the amount of wastewater flushed into the sewer line is sometimes not sufficient to convey the solid waste all the way to the city main sewer line, which causes some blockage. The municipal code will require access to this cleanout placed every fifty feet instead of one hundred feet as required the plumbing code. The cleanout shall be located in a readily accessible location without removing a toilet fixture. As stated earlier, the two thousand fifteen International Property Maintenance Code is adopted as part of the two thousand sixteen Daly City Municipal Code Title Fifteen, including the new two thousand sixteen California Existing Building Code based on the International Existing Building Code. Both International Property Maintenance Code and Existing Building Code will provide guidance in identifying the violation or prescribing alternative solutions to the alteration of existing buildings where the regulation of new model codes may not be applicable or too stringent to the existing building, which may undergo substantial alteration from its original construction and to comply with current building code may be costly. As again, new building codes are not retroactive to existing building codes, I mean existing buildings. The International Property Maintenance and Existing Build, Building Code will provide flexibility in providing procedures in prescribing compliance for existing buildings that may be unhealth, in an unhealthy condition or lack of proper, proper maintenance that is creating unsentary or unsafe building conditions. This concludes my presentation for the new model code adoption, and staff is available for any questions.
Um, any questions before we open the public hearing?
I have, I, I'll wait till after you.
Just a quick question, um on the graphic you showed up there about clearing space in the garage every fifty feet? We're talking about inside the garage, yeah?
Inside the garage.
So how do we propose to enforce that? Is that gonna be dependent on public, like the public calling and saying, hey, I've seen this guy's garage is stuffed full of bicycles?
This is about a sewer cleanout.
Again, let's say we're proposing a new bathroom in the garage area. This is the right time to do that. But for existing building code, we will not be forcing them to be providing those cleanouts.
Oh, got it, okay.
And I would imagine, depending on how the house is built, sometimes that pipe would not be inside the building. It could be outside the building as well. It is on my house.
Again.
Cause I know some of our inside, some of our outside.
Yeah.
In most cases. I'm sorry.
You can walk to it.
In most cases, most plumbers go inside the building, remove the toilet fixture and do their cleanout from there. But by regulating a location of a cleanout whenever a new bathroom is proposed in the garage area, this is the right time to provide a cleanout inside the building. Again, if you see the cleanout outside of the building by the garage that says city sewer line, that is required whenever a repair of the sewer line outside the building is made.
Okay. Okay, um at this time, I'm gonna open the matter for public hearing. Um I don't, I don't have anybody up here talking. Anybody wanna come up and run up and talk about both building code adoption? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, public hearing is closed. Do we have any questions on the matter before we go?
I have a couple of questions. Um, let's say we adopt uh these modifications or additions um and we find that some of them are just too onerous or they're just not workable. Is there a process of undoing what we're adopting?
There's a process of requiring an alternate means and methods to the construction project.
Okay.
Which is totally different from our adopted municipal code. So there's a process without amending the current adopted Title Fifteen.
Okay, go ahead.
We, we, is it like by, by way of a revised plan? We don't actually amend the Uniform Building Code though, do we?
We will not amend the Uniform Building Code, but the code allows alternate means and methods or alternate designs and methods.
And would that be done by project?
Cause we adopted the uniform code. It's uniform to everybody, but we can make modifications locally, right?
Yeah, through, uh through the mayor. Uh yeah, basically on a case-by-case basis, we can do an alternative means and methods based on, you know, what the, the designer proposes to us and seeing that it's comparable. Now, if it's, you know, a problem that's repeating itself and we're having overall compliance issues, then we could come back to the council to amend the building code. But on a case-by-case basis, there's a, a process.
And the fact that this is universal all over the state of California and the vast majority of it is universal all over the country. I mean, this is what is considered best practice.
All right, uh is there a motion for the city attorney to read by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. This is an ordinance of the city of Daly City amending Title Fifteen of the Daly City Municipal Code by repealing and replacing specific provisions of chapter fifteen.
All right, uh Ms. Christensen, would you like to introduce the ordinance?
I would be honored to.
All right, we have what we need on item fifteen. Thank you both very much. We're moving on to item sixteen. Uh, good, good job, folks. Thank you very much. Introduction to the ordinance, excuse me, introduction of the ordinance to revise and adopt the twenty sixteen additions for the California Fire Code. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor, how are you, council members? As stated before, um this is the final adoption of the Fire Code. As Mr. Medipat said, um we are in performance by adopting the twenty-four part nine Fire Code.
I am sorry.
Don't worry.
I saw a light, wasn't right enough. Um, I'm sorry. So again, uh this is the adoption of the two thousand sixteen Fire Code for the city of Daly City. Uh, when the city adopts the two thousand sixteen version of the state code, it will be in full compliance with the state and um with all the regulations consistent with those regulations within the city. Uh we do have some amendments to the city, uh by the city to that ordinance. Uh there's only six of them and only one of them is really substantive. The first one is a modification to fifteen thirty-two uh ten. And that's just basically the adoption language to change the new code and also to add appendix E, uh L. Appendix L was removed from the Fire Code last time. It's moved back into the Fire Code. This time it is dealing with firefighter rescue air systems within high-rise buildings. So that's added back in. Additionally, uh in uh fifteen thirty-two ninety, we added back in just the language appendix L to refer back to the appendix uh for the design of those systems because uh ninety does deal with those systems. Fifteen thirty-two, two-ten is additional language to clarify the definition of fire access lanes. Uh it is basically consistent with what we have now. It's just a further definition and clarification of those things. The new item in here is fifteen thirty-two two sixty, and it establishes requirements for car stackers. Due to the limited space we have, uh we are seeing more and more um applications with what they call car stackers in. Basically, you, you drive a car and it rotates up and moves around and you stack three or four, depending on the sign of the system, one above the other. Uh because of that stacking, they are very hazardous. They're more hazardous than just a straight parking vehicle in a, in a garage. And so we've added some additional requirements, uh increasing the density of fire sprinklers and the protection around it. And uh then we renumbered uh in fifteen thirty-two two seventy. To make it more consistent and readable, we've moved the existing vegetation management down to the end of the amendments. So all other additions and amendments from previous uh codes remain the same and unchanged.
Okay, uh the car stackers, that's where you're putting one top or the other. Where, where is that occurring in Daly City?
We have, uh currently we have two applications for uh apartment buildings that have that in them. They're in a, a subterranean uh situation where they come in, they get the number of parking spaces they need by stacking them. And one of them's.
How high is the stack?
It's, and right now it's only two. The ones I've seen right now are only too high, but they're six or eight wide. So it's like this little. You know, so you, there's one empty and five, six.
Where you could all, where you're only presumably do six cars, you're doing twelve.
Right, correct.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and there's various, there's very smalls and styles of these.
They don't have to be exposed. In other words, they don't have to be above ground. They could be underground?
Oh, definitely they're underground. Yep. And that's why we wanna increase the density of the fire sprinklers because of that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And with the kind of parking problems we have, it allows if you have a small footprint building to meet the parking requirements.
You, you see it a lot in San Francisco for the same reasons. Up there you'll see elevators going down into a basement, same way, and car stackers and so we look to them for um guidance on what we should do.
Just hope nobody's in a hurry to get to work, huh?
I've seen a lot of them overseas as well, both in Europe and in Asia.
And, and they, they usually have a, uh alternate means of power and a generator to help. So if the power goes out, you still get out.
Yeah.
But you're right.
No, I, I was in Vietnam and I saw one that was, I think, ten high.
Oh, yeah.
Ten high, it was ten high and I think six or seven across. It was really gigantic.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, um, uh, was that, was that it?
That's all.
Okay, any other, any other question for Deputy Fire Chief? All right, we're gonna open the public hearing. Um, again, not a mad rush to the desk to uh ask questions.
Come on, somebody's coming down.
So we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion for the city attorney to read by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 You are approved for you to read it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Daly City repealing and replacing chapter fifteen point three-two of the municipal code regarding the adoption of the twenty sixteen California Fire Code based on the twenty fifteen edition of the International Fire Code with changes, additions, amendments, and deletions.
All right, Ms. Boitavitz, would you like to introduce this ordinance?
Absolutely, I'd be honored. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you very much, Deputy Fire Chief. Okay, we're on to public appearances, oral communications, probably my favorite time of night over the last few years.
Yeah.
Let me start with the always entertaining Marion Mann. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. When I realized that our mayor was retiring, he wasn't thirty-one anymore. Twenty years ago, he won his election and he's been here ever since and he's done a tremendous job. I wanna thank you. See, I'm selfish. This is my city. And if you mess with my city, you know about, cause I've been sitting there thirty-eight years.
I know.
But you've done a good job and I wanna congratulate you, but I can't believe your kids are so old.
Yeah, I know.
Also, I would like to say that I like the two people that were elected council. They're young, they're fresh, they have new ideas um and expertise, and they will work very well with the experience of the uh members of the council now. So I'm really looking forward to being happy with you so that I don't have to get up in school like an, an old Grammy, okay? But I do want to thank you, uh Sal, you, you've done a, you've really done a remarkable job and you've always been the true gentleman.
Thank you.
So I, I give you, I don't know if I should say thank, oh, all right, thank you.
No, thanks, Marion. Appreciate it. Uh Gabriella Maxman.
Hi, Mayor and council member. So I have a question. We had someone at our home from Sky Tech Solar. Um, cause we wanted to take advantage of the new uh solar legislation and I guess perks that have been passed. And they um expire at the end of the year and uh he told us that there's no way that anything will be approved in Daly City between now and the end of the year um because of how difficult it is to get things approved in the Daly City um building department.
Yeah, obviously.
I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to keep harping on the same thing. Like, this is really a personal. As a homeowner, we would like to install solar and we've been told that we're not gonna be able to benefit from, um, from uh this program because Daly City is not going to expedite.
So was he trying to sell you something or discourage you from buying it?
Um, no, he was just telling, so we wanna buy it and we wanted to get the program that expires at the end of the year. And he said, it's not gonna happen, based on his personal experience with how things work in the building department.
Not a very good salesperson.
He's, he's an honest person like I am.
I'll, I'll tell you what, we can't take any action on it, but I'll, I'll make sure to follow up, make sure someone sends you an email or something, let you know what's going on with the solar program.
And what the schedule would be.
What the schedule would be, yeah.
That would be super helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gabriella. Uh Pamela De Giovanni. Probably the last time I'm gonna say those words publicly, Pamela.
No, it's not. Hi, good evening and um as Marion Mann and all of us know that this is kinda bittersweet. We do have two wonderful um electeds here tonight that will be filling those seats and look toward the future. But we also wanna recognize the fact that, you know, that I wasn't here the full time, but I was here and I did hear from people tonight to let you know that two of the things that really stand out for me is that you, when you save those jobs with allied ways, you let somebody know to their face and you are all, have always been very honest, which I really appreciate that fact. When someone asks you a question, you answer honestly, within a thoughtful manner. And you let them know that we don't have litigious businesses in our city and you sent them packing. Number two is that you saved future children from being killed with assault weapons on Michigan Street. The corridor that is now slated to be our community schools rather than with assault weapons. And that really hit with Elizabeth Torres, who as you know, lost both sons to gun violence and the accessibility of that. And the people really, without stepping on other people's toes. And personally, you've always been open and never degraded anyone, even if we had the opposite, um, you know, feelings or, or you were always there to listen and never put me down or anyone else in our feelings and, and, and you always acknowledge that. So for those reasons and with respect and with honor, you have served this city that many years and you will be missed. And um it is pretty bittersweet, but as you said, you know when it's time. And I'm sure that everybody else feels the same here, but it won't be the last time that you utter those words. So thank you for all your service to our city and it's been difficult at times, I'm sure, when you made those decisions, but you did it with your heart and thinking it through and, and even though people don't see eye to eye, you've. through and even though people don't see eye to eye, you truly did it for those reasons. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay, I don't have any more cards to add.
Oh, there's.
Well, you didn't turn a card.
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't get a, oh, sorry. Another, another failure by Mr. Burt, Mr. Burt. I'm just kidding. Marie Buzwala.
Marie Buzwala, I just wanted to say some good, kind words about you, Sal. I've appreciated you being up here all the time. You've been a gentleman, you've been kind, thoughtful, you've always done the honest, right thing and I think part of that is probably your background in the law. And I can remember quite some time ago, before you ran for office, you came, because we met you years before that, and you said, Marie, I want to run for office, do I have your support? And I said, oh, sure, sure, I can endorse you. Suddenly I dawned on me, you were living in Broadmoor. And I asked you, did you move? You didn't realize it at first and I can understand why because everybody calls everything Daly City. So I was so happy that you did move, you got elected and you've been here and you've been for the people forever and we love you and just to say, I hope that you have the most happiness, you know, away from all that, all this goes on because it takes a lot of commitment to take a public office. Your wife was wonderful backing you up all the time and your children, but now you'll have an opportunity to do so much that you haven't been able to do the last few years. Enjoy it, please come back and see us.
Thank you.
Okay, and I wish you just much happiness.
Thanks very much, Marion.
Thank you for everything you did.
Thank you.
Let me also say, Mr. Torres, and to the members of the audience, that yes, this is Sal's last technical meeting, but on December twelfth at six o'clock is when his real last meeting will be and we would hope that you all come and share your stories or comments about Sal then, it's going to be his farewell. And so December twelfth, six o'clock, and you can also address your comments to David Canapu, who's that, that's going to be his last meeting as well. So we hope you all join us December twelfth, six o'clock. And I'll save my farewells for you then.
Yeah, Marie, you should know that ever since we moved from Broadmoor, Leslie has never forgotten the beautiful little house we had in Broadmoor.
I know. But it was for your success.
No, I know, thank you. Okay, thanks very much, everyone, I appreciate the kind words. Next, are there any appointments to board or commissions? I do have actually one, I wonder if you might indulge me, Howard Edelman has been my appointment to the planning commission. He's done a really excellent job, I'd like to reappoint him to that position. I think all of you know who Howard is and if I have your support, I'd ask for you to approve him. I think we can do that with a three-o vote, can we?
We can, Mr. Mayor, but we do have two new council members coming on who will get appointments as well, so.
You know what, I'll withdraw. It's probably best to do that. I'll let you guys decide who best to put into the planning commission spot. No offense, Howard.
And that's not to say that Mr. Edelman would not be a fine candidate.
No offense to Howard, but you know, you're right, it just dawned on me that it probably makes sense at this juncture of the year to just leave that open and allow you guys to establish some, yeah, some history with your appointment, so I'll withdraw that. Let's go on to reports from the council committees, any reports?
Yes, I'll make a report. So the San Francisco Airport Roundtable Committee has been in the process of recommending certain issues to Congresswoman Eschew, Spear, and Congressman Farr regarding some of the air traffic patterns over Daly City. One of the point of contentions that I addressed and I objected to is they're seeking to, it's very technical, but they're basically seeking to approve the, a flight pattern that will, in my opinion, increase the level of noise to the Southern Hills Crocker area. There is some debate whether or not that actually will happen, but I have objected to that being done. I have written a letter to the airport commission making our objections known and I'm hopeful that they don't just shift the noise to Daly City because I basically argued that what they're going to end up doing is shifting more of the noise to Daly City rather than resolving the problem of airplane noise over our city. So that's the status of that right now. I don't know what they're going to do, whether or not the recommendation will stand as is or whether or not they will change it. That's my report.
All right, you have anything? Okay, under staff, any staff reports?
None this evening.
Okay, I don't have any adjourned memories, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night, folks, thank you.
All right, Sal.